There's legal stuff, city's gotta have. That's all fine and dandy, but some of the other stuff, you know, me and Brett can sit down and go through it. If, you know, if that's the attitude to move forward and try and clean it up or just make things a little more, a little more black and white as to what's going on and kind of, it's good in areas we've discussed to have some gray areas on things, but there's certain things that you gotta have definitive also.
Yes, I mean, we talked about performance evaluations and different things that are in here that have never even been looked at. EMTs, EMTs were supposed to be hired, EMTs were moved up to firefighters. That was not in here, which increased the cost.
Right.
Because of the need for more expertise, I guess you could say. For me, I'm still struggling a little bit because as an elected official, I sat in on this meeting also, and I felt like my integrity, because I echo some of the things that James had said.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'm not even aware of the letter that got read, so I mean, I'm kind of in the dark for that one.
Well, it, it, he was correct with what he said. So, and then I do have a little bit of concerns because even at the last meeting, I know that it was, it was very briefly discussed, but I was under the full impression that when everybody walked out of the room, because Elizabeth had also stated and we concur that it was dollar for dollar.
You know, you guys can hash that with the city, like I says. I just know, I just know what went on ahead of time and that Elizabeth did meet with Jeanette. And like I said, and I told, told you and I told Travis, I said, Jeanette got flushed into the meeting, she didn't have her papers with her. And she's like, yeah, it's like dollar for dollar. She even related when the council put, I think I misrepresented this meeting. So, it's, it's, that's something you guys got to decide is what I'm saying. It wasn't something that intentionally got thrown in your face is what I'm trying to say.
And I appreciate that, Pat, thank you. But, I feel like-
And if that's a proposal you guys go back to, throw it back to the city dollar for dollar.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking is, is countering with the dollar for dollar. And then later on, we'll sit down, you guys can sit down, subbar is the-
And like I said, that, that's stuff for you guys, you know, me and Brett will, we'll work the logistics side of it and make things work and we'll make it work on our end. It's up to your board and the city board to come to an agreement of, of what you guys wanna pay or what you wanna do or don't. I mean, that's out of our, that's out of our hands. But we're just here to tell you, we, we can make it work if, if that's the path you guys choose.
On the billing part, do you guys, are you guys gonna continue to bill for ambulance services and whatnot?
We will, I mean, there, there was a discussion on that and there's, and you know, Travis has been made aware of it. There's just, what happens on the billing, until the reports get completed by the volunteers in the system that they are, this ESO is the, the reports that we do for all the medical reports. Until they go in and finish all the paperwork, dot all the i's, cross the t's, and lock it, that's when it can get sent to the billing company. And right now, you've had five bills got sent to the billing company.
And where, where stuff happened, is there, why Brett wasn't aware, he was, he wasn't looking in the right area of the-
Right, and we got that clarified with Brett of where you gotta go, so, I, I've gotta do it constantly, you know. We got a policy that our volunteers gotta have their reports done in forty-eight hours. Granted, people got kids and it takes a little longer sometimes, but I'm on the phone calling, hey, you gotta get this report done so I can get billed. I told Brett, that's the same thing you're gonna have to do, you're gonna start going through these reports. You're gonna have to call your volunteers and come, hey, you guys gotta, you know, go on the ambulance to the car wreck and treating the patient, that's all the fun stuff. And then when it's over, then you got that hour and a half of paperwork you gotta do, that's the not-so-fun stuff. But it's gotta be done if you want to get paid.
The builder's parameter in ESO that I didn't, wasn't aware of, telling Pat and both of you.
We got, we got Brett, Brett scored away on that, so he can start getting on the volunteers who are running the calls, who are not completing them to, to get them completed. Because if you can't get them calls completed, you can't bill for them. And the billing company just straight up, the, the, the way the system's set up, until it's completed and locked, you can't even forward it onto the billing company, so.
Yeah, and we can't do it, him and I, if we weren't on the call.
No, we can't falsify records, so it's gotta be the people that ran on that ambulance that's the ones who gotta complete it. And it's something I deal with regularly, I mean, I deal with it with my, you know, my volunteer people all the time. I mean, they got kids, they got baseball games, this and that, and it's like, come on, we've been three days, we gotta get these done. This is, you know, there's a reason behind them, they gotta get these done on time, so.
As we look at all the options that are here, and that's why I bring this up. During your billing and your attempt to get paid, the patient is waiting on pins and needles that he might be billed. And one of the things we've got on the other side, I'm trying to be fair to everybody, is this MedX plan, no patient gets billed. There is no billing, they, they take care of it.
It's huge.
And my, my-
Well, they get billed, their insurance company, they all get billed.
None of that, but they handle it. So, the patient is okay. And what, my primary concern is what is in the best interest of all the citizens of White Pine County.
Now, are they gonna, are they gonna, when they, when they respond on call McGill, are they gonna push McGill out of the way and automatically transport? Or are they gonna still let you guys transport calls, or are they just gonna force your volunteers out? Because I don't see MedX wanting to do this agreement if they're not getting to transport patients and bill for it.
Well, we'll hear from them.
But that's, that's, like I said, that's your guys' deal, but.
And we will hear from MedX, hopefully, in just a second. But I'm trying to address the three different options. What is in the best interest of the citizens?
And like I say, the one thing you wanna look at is the only option that the city's been aware of is option one. We've never been made, nobody's reached out to anybody on the council or anything about option two, to see if there's an appetite going forward for mutual aid or any of that. Like I explained to Travis, you know, mutual aid and automatic aid are totally different. So, with mutual aid, say, you have a fire, say Lori Carson's house, gotta wait for Brett to run the engine from station one or McGill. When they get on scene, if they can't handle it, then they request mutual aid from the city. It's not the minute there's a call south of town, you call the city, because that's automatic aid. So, they're two different things. So, that's one thing you wanna consider also.
And if I'm not mistaken, you correct me if I'm wrong. Upwards over ninety percent of all calls we have, city and county, are within the city, or, 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 excuse me, I'll take that back. They're emergency medical as opposed to fire.
Probably, well, as opposed to fire, yeah, but when you got fire, then you got auto accidents and the different things that go with it. So, probably eighty, eighty-five percent, probably the safe number.
Okay.
It's that way nationwide, so, not only where you need.
As I read in this agenda, and you say that nobody's brought this back, this was on the county's agenda, we discussed it a week ago, we had this on here. It's public information, the city should have had it, the city should have-
Well, they have, but nobody's approached them about doing anything with it, is just my point.
Well, we're here today is to, to make a decision, and I, I would think that the city would have jumped on this and said, wait, let's see if we can't delay this or do whatever. So, item one is a modified contract with you guys. Item two is the contract with MedX for emergency services only. Item three is to a combination of MedX and ECT, so those are the three options that we have. And as we, my primary, I got no problem, I, I like the way the city and the county are running. I, I give this right, I do like that. But my, my real concern is the guy who doesn't have any money or doesn't have any insurance and he's got the pressure of getting billed for it. My life flight to Reno was sixty-seven thousand dollars four years ago, sixty-seven thousand dollars. I'm lucky I was insured and paid a hundred percent. But what about the poor person who isn't or doesn't have, or has a deductible? And that's, that's where it comes in with the option of splitting the medical part. I asked the, the MedX people about a helicopter, because right now we're so short in the outlying areas, Baker, Cherry Creek Run. And of course, that may be an option, but bottom line is, as far as who responds and what, I'm not privy to any of that. I've never heard anybody really complain about any of it. But my, my primary concern is the citizens and out-of-pocket pay. And I just, and I think that's something that is a little better on the MedX side than on your side. But I got no problem with the way the city and the county operate. I do on the billing, but I do wanna hear from the MedX people, and, and you can counter if you'd like. But does any other commissioner have anything for these two? I do wanna hear from MedX, I think that's only fair. Okay, do you have anything else you wanna add?
The only thing I wanna add is regardless of which way it goes, him and I are still gonna have to work together. So, that's inevitable, so, and we always will.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate what the city and the county are doing. Now, if MedX would come forward, you'll please present what their, their picture.
Sure, I'll make sure this is the most, um, Hall Ward, I take the direction for MedX for the record. So, just a couple of things, a lot of good discussion today. You know, the, the thing that I, I love for emergency medical services, I'm a paramedic by training. And so, to see collaboration happening and things getting worked out is what, what I hope to achieve every day. So, I think it's already been a win for the day as, as it is. Speaking to some of the things about us specifically, so with, with MedX, you are correct. We, we work very hard to ensure that patients are cared for without burdening them with any undue financial burden. There's a lot of factors at play right now within the industry that are advocating for more of a patient-centered approach in medical transport. And, and it's really industry-wide, it's not gonna be something just specific to MedX. And so, it's very exciting to see the direction that we're, that we're going with that. For us, we're very proud of the fact that that's something we pioneered years ago and that the rest of the industry is going that direction. So, to your, to your point, there's a lot of ways that we can ensure that a patient doesn't endure any kind of undue financial burden. And so, like you said, things are expensive, people are insured, sometimes they're not. And we like to make sure that nobody's gonna get a sense of collections or anything like that for that nature. Far as collaboration and working together on scenes and that sort of a thing, do we bill for transports? Yes, we do. Is that what we live and die by? No, it's not. So, in that moment, whatever is the most important for that patient, if by chance the, the volunteers at one of the outlying agencies, they, they, they have the unit, they wanna, they wanna take the call to completion and take it into town, great, we'll, we'll be supportive of that decision. And so, it's not a, we're not in a turf war, we're not here to, to take call for call, you know, every call that matters. The, the goal is, are we providing a service to the community? Are we providing quality patient care and making sure that things are getting taken care of? And so, that's the, that's the direction that we're gonna take that. So, it's not a, a sort of a, we're posturing for, for every call and we're gonna, you know, push somebody out in a way where it's, this is a collaboration, we're here to work together, and we're gonna make sure that everybody gets transported appropriately. So, is that, I, you know, entertain any questions?
If there was a call down on three eighteen, and would you guys go on every call for, say, there's an auto accident, so I'm a medic, there's probably someone here. Would you go on every call, or do you wait for the city or the county to call you and say, come on, we need you?
So, forgive me, is that within the county that you're talking, okay, yes?
Wait a minute, it might not be within, because we have a mutual aid agreement with Nye County on three eighteen south.
Okay, I got you.
And even on highway six. So, when we cross borders, White Pine County does that. Would MedX be on board with crossing that border?
Yeah, so, that's, that's a great question. As you can see how batteries can really cause some confusion in a lot of things. And I think to, to draw from an example of something that we're already currently doing, we have the ambulance in Wells. We provide the primary nine-one-one unit there. We're the only ambulance between Elko and Wendover at that point. And so, our agreement is specifically with the city. Now, it is well, well-recognized by all the parties involved. It is, it is in the best interest of the community for us to respond to anything that we're called to in that area, because we're the ambulance. And so, we don't wanna see another ambulance drive by our ambulance to respond to the call. So, to your point, we'll, we'll respond to the best interest of the community as kind of directed by, by everybody involved.
Well, that really opens my mind, because I don't wanna hear, a, a call is at three eighteen out by Sunnyside, and MedX says, that's not our territory, we're not going out there, and then all of a sudden you've got someone laying out there, and then the city or the county has to respond. We need the territory, and I say territory, White Pine County certainly, but we have agreements with Elko County towards Wendover on highway fifty. We have agreements with Nye County on highway six, Lincoln County on ninety, on ninety-three and three eighteen. But we need assurances that when there's a call, it don't make a difference. If you are the, if we agree to go to MedX for the support of the EET in White Pine County, we need assurances that you're going to go to three eighteen. I mean, that's, I think that opens up a whole new window, because I understand the legal part, we can't fly into Nye County or we can't fly here. But what does it do, we're trying to make this right and make the city and the county and everybody right. I'm really not trying to be long-winded, I've got a bunch of questions on this deal. I wanna make sure I made the right vote here or the right decision. And I, I like MedX because of your equipment, your qualified candidates, you have EMT in the hall, that's what you do. I know that the city and the county have EMTs and they have firefighters, a combination EMT, firefighters, I understand all that. But where do we go, I mean, I, I just see this could open up a can of worms as far as legally.
So, if I, if I can just comment briefly, I think what Paul was being censored to, correct me if I'm wrong, when he asked that question about, was that in the county, I think the, the purpose of that question was that he, the answer wasn't going to be, he's going to encroach on the city's, you know, purview. Is, is that what you're, so he was saying, was, was the area you were talking about in the city in which, you know, the city has the right to respond and, and call in mutual aid if they need it? Or was it in the outlying areas? I, I think the fact that they're already working well is another thing. I think they're certainly willing to go outside of the county, you know, pursuant to our mutual aid agreements that we have with other counties.
Thanks for that, because that involves MedX and the city. Okay.
And also the part, the national part of that, too.
I've got a, a question. One of the appealing things about your proposal is the, the no ambulance billing, you accept with the insurance. The, the thing I'm curious about is, is we've got, there's a pretty big sector in our community that kind of falls between the cracks. They don't have insurance, but they make too much money for Medicaid, they have no, no insurance whatsoever. If you transport one of them and they have no insurance, that's not an automatic freebie though, right? You're, you are going to bill them.
We, we work with them and make sure they're not gonna be billed anything that they're not gonna be able to handle. And so, we, we do our best to make sure they're not gonna get a bill and do what we can with them. But you are correct, we're, we're doing that in Elko, we're doing that for the people in Wells that we transport. You know, we're not, nobody's gonna get sense of collections, nobody's gonna get transported. And in that moment, you know, I, I don't have insurance, that, that's not gonna be a worry on their mind.
It's good to hear.
Does anyone else on the commission have anything? I think we've discussed this both last meeting and this meeting, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, whatever way this goes, you know, I'm not like gonna be anti either way. But of course, I guess is my chief concern is what Pat brought up was that there's that fifteen percent. And that's what really puts me over to, to going with the city is that fifteen percent, you know, if we don't, you know, mutually aid or whatever we do, if we do go with MedX, it's that fifteen percent is we don't, you know, the volunteers, you know, are gonna do their best and are great folks. But I think to me, I really feel comfortable that, okay, I know that that was fifteen percent of calls that involve fire or an apparatus such that those are, you know, that they're, are paid and trained staff that will be backing up, you know, our volunteers on that. I just, I have, I had a real hard time letting that fifteen percent not fall through the cracks, but not be served as well as it, as, as it is now. And that, that, that's where, that's where I come. I think, you know, things are working good with the city, yes, you have this other bucket of the political side, which, you know, we can discuss if we wanna go forward as is or toss it back at the dollar for dollar, you know, either way. But that, that, that's where I, that's where I tend to, you know, go, be on the city side. It's just that fifteen percent does, does give me a little pause.
What, do you think it wouldn't be, look, I, I mean, I, I wanna know, can you be more specific?
Yes.
What do you think will happen?
Okay, so for example, we'll just use your house as an example, can you?
Okay.
Something, okay, we go mutually aid.
I wish I had my pawns back.
So then, you know, a volunteer has to respond out in McGill or station one, go all the way through, you leave right past the city's fire, fire station. And then they have to get on scene to do, you know, to assess what's going on, and then they would have to call the city. So, we're talking another, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, who knows what, before your property would be getting serviced on a fire.
Whereas, is the agreement now, they'd just be automatically rolled out?
Whereas, right now, they would roll out and be at your house fifteen, twenty minutes earlier than the contrary.
And maybe I'm making a mistake, because I, in my mind, as the right thing to do with the citizens, I'm automatically thinking that that can be worked out.
I mean, from all my discussions, it's hard economically to make it where it's an automatic on the fireside. At least that's what-
Would we look at the seventy-five thousand?
Well, and, well, once again, you're automatic aid versus mutual aid, and none of those have been, you know, so if we go with MedX today, and then, you know, the city's gonna have to be a part of two and three, and we're back to, you know, having these, you know, same political things.
Yeah, it's back to that, what made it financially viable for them was being able to run the ambulance stuff.
And past history tells me that, that going back to those aid agreements, it didn't work. I mean, I, I mean, we had sheets and sheets of calls that had gone awry because of improper, we didn't, we, we didn't have proper protocols for dispatching, how things were handled, and we constantly had accident scenes and fires, things where, where people were waiting for service when there was a station much closer to them with, with a staff ready to rock and roll. And I just, I've got to agree, that fifteen percent gives me great pause.
Yeah, I mean, if MedX was, yeah, we gotta fire an apparatus, and that'd be pretty appealing. But where, you know, I think their medical service and what they could provide to the patients is great, and I love the whole privatization side of it. That's, that's just what gives me, that's what gives me pause. And I'll be the first to admit, there's a lot of things that I don't agree with on the city. I agree with, you know, Richard and some of our conversations on more of the bureaucratic and these other things. But I think on police and fire, we have to park those issues at the door. Granted, you know, what was said wasn't right, and, you know, I talked to Elizabeth and James about, about that, and, you know, and then I heard from what Pat had to say. So, you know, you know, that, that is what it is, it's politics, and unfortunately, it gets nasty, it should be that way. But, you know, I think there's ways we can, you know, there's kind of two buckets here, the political side and what's actually happening. I think what's actually happening is really good, you know, we, we can figure out, you know, whatever the, you know, if we wanna, whatever on the, on the money side, we can, we can make that motion here today or what. That, that's where I come down to it. And like I said, I think there's positives and negatives to both sides of it. So, I'm not, you know, a hundred percent one way or zero the other. But I, you know, that's, a fifteen percent, like I said, is where, where it comes down to me is that gives me pause, but go in the other direction.
I, um, where I'm having a little bit of heartburn, I, probably could be easily resolved. If we renew this contract with the city and leave things as is, I'd like to see some kind of amendment to the contract to stop us from being in this position again. What do I mean by that? I mean, we've had a contract for much longer than right now. And all of a sudden, two years into it, they wanna come back and say, we want more money now. I don't, I, I think it's reasonable to put into contract to say, come back and say, this is way costing us way more than we thought, and we'd like to renegotiate. But I'd like to stop us from, okay, we gave them more money, we renewed, and then two years later, again, here we are, yeah, we're gonna break, we're gonna cancel the contract unless you give us more. I don't wanna play this game. I wanna contract, serve the people, and be done with it.
And I, and I can speak to a part of, you know, just what I heard from Pat, the city's perspective is, when they opened this up, it was COVID and the call volume wasn't coming in like we anticipated. And then as that rolled on, you know, things obviously looked a lot better. So, that, that, just saying from the other side of the fence, that's, that's what I heard.
To be clear, though, the city's decision did not change. They, they, that was said in the negotiations, that, hey, look, when we first decided to cancel this contract, you know, we thought the sky was falling, turns out the sky's not falling. But they never said, you know what, we're good, we'll withdraw, or have a motion to re-estate. That, they, they, they stuck to their guns about asking for more, more money. I mean, you heard the, I mean, so, so that, I mean, I, I agree that that was probably the initial concern, but that didn't change behavior in any way, as, as the information changed.
So, I guess I, I would be fine moving forward with this if, you know, if I was gonna make a motion on that, it would probably include our DA and city attorney maybe working out some language to, I guess, make it more difficult to, to cancel the contract? Is that?
We can do that, we, we, we-
Let's just not make it so that we can, either, either side gets to decide to cancel for no reason. No, this is a contract, and unless there's this material breach or a financial emergency, there's no reason to, don't sign the contract if you don't think you can do it.
Yeah, well, so, the problem with a financial emergency is, is as defined by whom?
Right.
So, we, we can put language, right now there's language in that allows the, the city and the county to come together yearly, talk about, you know, negotiating any changes that may need to be negotiated without putting the actual contract in jeopardy. That, that's, that's currently in the current contract, and we can certainly leave that language. What we can take out is, is any termination outside of material breach, if, if, you know, the, the council decides that.
I'm sorry, no, I, I really would like to see us look at the different types of aids in regards to an aid agreement. And I also would like to, you know, on the fireside, I think that we need to, to look at that a little bit more, too.
Shane?
Is it possible, this is Dr. Vitale, if I have a couple of questions on the medical director?
Yeah, we're gonna get you a little louder. Go ahead, state your name and who you are, where you're with.
Sure, I'm Dr. Vitale, I'm the medical director for the county and for the city EMS. So, I have a couple of questions here. One is, is I'm concerned, because right now, we have a convoluted situation with the county and the city. Now, you're gonna add a third entity into this, and it's gonna be making even more convoluted. So, I'm very concerned about that. The other concern was just brought up about making the contract with the city of not being able to breach that. You know, that has to be the same thing with MedX, if you go that way. Has to be the same thing, and MedX can't come back and say, oh, we're not billing patients, so we're not making money, so you gotta come back to you and get more money. So, that needs to be done to, to MedX as well. And, and the other issue I have is, what is the qualifications? I have not heard from MedX what the qualifications are of these EMTs or EMT advances that they're gonna have. Now, we, we need to understand that we have a very unique situation in, in the county with our qualifications that we have of our advance, because we don't have enough paramedics in our county. So, we're getting variances for our, our advances, so they can do certain things in our county that advanced EMTs can't normally do. So, the concern is, is that MedX may not have this, the county doesn't have enough individuals. You're gonna have to fall back on the city anyway, to come out there, take care of the patients. And so, my concern is, as a physician, is I wanna do what's in the best for all our patients regardless of our cost. I know you guys are concerned with cost, I'm concerned with cost, but the bottom line is, it's gotta be what's in the best interest of our patients. And that is, that is first and foremost, in my mind, was the qualifications of individuals going out there, having met all those qualifications. And the other issue is, is who's gonna be the medical director for MedX? You can't have medics having one medical director going out somewhere. And all one medical director of the county, if you have medics having a medical director, there's gonna be a conflict, I think. So, again, that is gonna be greatly convoluted, having three entities involved.
Thank you, anything else, anybody?
Paul was going to address the concerns.
Sure, so, very, very valid points.
I missed a word, sorry.
That's okay.
I know you well enough, I'm sorry.
Very valid points to bring up. So, we, our, our ambulances are staffed at the advanced EMT level. And so, that's an advanced EMT and an EMT that are working together in the unit. They are, they have some advanced certifications of ACLS, PALS, and PHGLS. And so, that's in addition to what the state requires. So, we went beyond what the state requires for the advanced EMT scope and had them become certified with those credentials as well. We do have some paramedics, and so, that's mainly in the Elko area. As stated from our last meeting, when we did present all of the information about us, we discussed an advanced EMT service, because that's what's currently being implemented here and is, and is serving the community rather well. And to, to the physician's point, the, the paramedics, just nationwide, there is a staffing shortage, much like, much of the other healthcare professions. And so, you have to be very careful about setting a precedent that you then cannot fill. And so, with the advanced EMT scope of the national scope of standards that are out there, it's a, they, they really can provide a great service to the community within that scope. And there are times when, you know, paramedics do well in some areas, but as it sits right now, the advanced EMT scope works really well for this area. And then, obviously, we do have the flight crew side, and that gets into the critical care level stuff. And those are critical care nurses and paramedics, and so, kind of a, a wider way of, of service levels there that we offer. Far as medical direction goes and conflicts of, you know, kind of training or patient handoff scope, that works really well in a lot of the other areas we work with. We work with Wendover ambulance, Elko ambulance, other flight providers, and all of them having different medical directors. And there's always a, a smooth patient handoff. And so, if there were to ever be some very specific issue where there may be some kind of continuity- And so, if there were to ever be some very specific issue where there may be some kind of continuity of care concerns, that was, that's always something we can iron out down the road, if, if that were to be something that we discovered.
Okay, anyone else? Anybody got anything else about what we discussed or what's going on here? Go ahead, please come forward, state your name.
Vodygola for the record, good morning. I just kinda wanted to set aside, since I do a lot of filming, I kinda wanted, I know Charlie and you had a couple of concerns about like collections.